We have a select board meetings, 24th, 2024. This meeting is broadcast by the NIM channel, YouTube channel and by Zoom. Anything before the publication?
Later, we viewing. In accordance with the open town and the open meeting law, if anyone in attendance wishes to record this meeting, they're required to notify the chair first. The chair may notify our other attendees. I have received notification the NIM observer is recording. If there's anyone else who's recording, please let me know. All right. First up, we got public comment. JP, anyone on Zoom wish to speak?
You can't see anybody.
Okay, anyone in the room wish to speak? Okay, very well. Next on the agenda, we have a grant of location, South Street. Joanne Callender up? And Daniel, you want to come up? Come on up, take a seat. Tom, you want to come up?
Good evening.
Joanne, hello?
Hi.
Wait, volume up? One sec. All right. Does that work? Are you still muted? No, she's not.
Can you speak for a moment?
Good evening.
You're faint, but we can hear. All right, Joanne, take it away.
Okay, so EverSource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately 10 feet of conduit into South Street, and that is to provide three new homes with power, 957, 969, and 997 South Street. And I understand that unfortunately, we neglected to put the verbiage on the engineer's sketch to alert the contractor not to do the work prior to this grant of location. So we accept responsibility for that. I know my supervisor sent an email explaining our situation to make sure that we catch it going forward, that it won't happen again.
Okay.
So my apologies.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay. Any questions, comments?
I don't have any comments really specifically on the application, presuming everything else was in order. But I would hope that you would now know if you develop other properties in Needham and this situation arises again, that we have a public grant of location process. And the reason for doing that is that often there are neighbors and things, we have seen things happen before, so it's worthwhile to be sure that the neighbors know this is going
I apologize. You know, I didn't know about it. We don't do a ton of work in this town, so I know now.
I understand that, thank you.
Tom, anything?
Yeah, I have nothing else. Everything else is fine.
Kathy, anything? Okay, just so you know that, grant of location, you are at legal peril because your equipment was not under your property. So that was a problem, and that had something happened, then you were, that'd be a legal problem.
Yeah.
So this all makes it legal. I need a motion if anyone wishes to make one.
It is a public hearing, so we just need to be sure there's no other members of the court.
This is a public hearing. Anyone on Zoom, JP? Anyone in the room? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I move that the select board approve and sign a petition for EverSource Energy to install approximately 10 feet of conduit in South Street.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, we take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay. Next up, Community Preservation Committee, CPC, consultation. Let's talk about tennis courts. Come on. Can we have Dave, Maureen Callahan, Lauren Spinning here? Lauren here?
No.
Cecilia, no?
She's going to be here on Zoom. I think she's.
I think she's on Zoom.
Zoom in.
JP, who do we have online?
Lauren's on.
So you said Lauren?
Yeah.
And Stacy's also there.
I'm Dave Herrer, this is Maureen, and we give just a brief introduction.
Yeah, please.
You happy to answer any questions?
Okay.
I know Cecilia prepared a very exhaustive history of this project, so I know you've got those details. From our point of view, CPC, this is our second go around with this application. So this is off cycle for us. We did not want to hold up construction on the tennis courts any longer, so we decided to do this in the fall. So that's really what we're here about. It is still the same money for the CPC. It's $1.4 million for eight tennis courts, and we've met many times with Park and Rec. We watched the planning board. We've been apprised of what those changes are that have been put into the proposal so that, taking into account Butter's concerns about stormwater and noise. So there were a couple of changes made, which we were definitely in favor of, but we would like to appropriate the $1.4 million to move this project forward. If you have any questions, we can take it from there.
Yes.
So I noticed just a small discrepancy. The $1.4 million you mentioned, it's printed $1.44 million in the packet, which was the same amount that was approved in NAY. Was that a deliberate change or was that a typo or?
That's a good question. Do you know that?
I think it was a typo.
I think it was a typo. I think it's 1.44, and the town was 1.6 something. It's in here too. I believe that that's correct, so we would have to change the warrant to reflect.
1.44.
1.44.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I just, this is a project that's gone through a number of iterations. I'm trying to think, three years? Did we start talking about this three years ago? It's been a long time, but I appreciate you're sticking with it. And as people have worked through the various issues over time and engaged with the public and the neighbors to bring forward a solution that I think finally looks like one that makes sense to all the different stakeholders, and I'm glad we got to this point and are able to support it.
I never thought I'd learn so much about post tension construction.
I agree.
But there are eight courts, none of them, any grass? Okay. That's why people from Needham will never win Wimbledon. Okay, but did you talk to the neighbors?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Were there issues of screening and other issues? Were they satisfied?
Yes, we believe so. We've talked to them a number of times, the planning board, talked to them a number of times. So there were many opportunities to express concern, which is why the design was changed slightly to sort of pull the new courts away from the property line as much as possible without, did not want to take any part of a parking lot. So we, that was one thing they couldn't do. So they moved it in, put in a lot of greens and trees and things to try to, you know, absorb sound and also provide privacy and also make the fencing higher so that hopefully errant balls do not go over much. They probably still will, but not as much.
More importantly, there's a, will be a prohibition of pickleball because people did not want pickleball because of the noise. But also I think there's some rules about the collegiate competition that you can't have a court that's lined for both.
Right, right.
As one or the other, okay.
Yep.
That's actually one thing I didn't notice in this presentation, and I know that that was really important to the neighbors. And it would just be great if that was included in the presentation to town meeting because otherwise people will ask that question.
Yeah, we can make it more clear. There's signage that was agreed to that's going to very clearly state no pickleball. Also very clearly state the hours that of operations so that people aren't there until nine o'clock or something on a, you know, or they're at 5:00 AM, so I think it's seven to eight. It's just, it's the noise we're in, it's maybe it's seven to nine. It's spelled out very clearly, when you can use them and that you can't use them for pickleball because that came out loud and clear. We heard that.
Great. Yeah, I will just say, I think this is really important. You know, the high school tennis team could not play, nobody could play on those, and so I think it's really important for the high school tennis players, but also for the whole town because this means that, you know, now the courts that they are using elsewhere can be used more by people in the town and, you know, residents can use these courts, you know, in the summer and after hours. So I mean, I think this is very valuable and is overdue, but I do appreciate that those problems, you know, needed to be worked through and, you know, needed to make sure that the neighbors, you know, had their concerns addressed. So I'm happy, you know, but it's important.
And also it's appreciated that you went off cycle because I know that's not the normal plan, but it's great that the tennis course won't be held up.
Right, thank you. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't want to get in the way of that, so.
Strangest of you guys in September.
I know.
Mary Ann?
Question really for Dave. Based on Josh's question about the amount, I'm now looking at the warrant article, and it looks, I don't know if it's different language, old language.
The warrant article is assuming 1,400,000 from CPA because the application that was filed was 1,400,000 even. It's the cover sheet that states that it's 1,440,000. But Mr. Levy is correct, in the spring, the appropriation request was 1,440,000. I, somewhere, there was an oversight. I don't know if the oversight was with the spring application, that it was typed in at 1,440,000 or whether the oversight is this application, that 1,400,000. The CPC did have their public meeting and did vote to recommend moving forward with the article as published, which is 1.4 million. And the finance committee also voted to recommend adoption of the warrant article as it appears in the warrant. So you would be looking at having to submit a motion to amend.
That's what I was asking. Okay, so it's not clear actually whether that motion is required at this point, or is it?
Sort out which is the right amount.
If, if we're going to have 1,440,000, there will need to be a motion to amend.
Has this already been printed?
The, I do not know that.
I mean, I guess I can't because his owner hasn't done yet.
I believe, but I don't have the.
I think 1.4 million is the correct amount. And I said before that the 1.44, I think it's a typo.
Oh.
Okay. We misunderstood that.
I think I understood it the other way, but.
I'm sorry for the confusion.
All right. Okay, and, and it looks to me like potentially that could be handled within contingency. I mean, we would hope to not have to do that if it were required, but, okay. All right, I was just trying to figure out if we need an amendment or not, so hopefully not.
Sort of Park and Rec now, relates the director of Park and Rec beyond Zoom, maybe we could ask?
That'll be interface, he's right there.
Oh, imagine that. Stacy, any thoughts?
The 1.4 is correct. The 1.44 is just a typo.
Okay.
So it's the motion I have here, so it's 1.4. And that was the one. An article.
Cecilia's memo said the same thing, that in February 2024, the request was revised to 1.44.
Okay.
So it sounds like we need to.
Just confirm with the numbers.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So 1.4.
No, he's saying Cecilia's saying, her memo says that it was revised to 1.44.
It's the bottom of the first page of the memo.
I think Lauren has an update for you guys.
Oh, Lauren's going to hand it up.
Oh. Hi, if I may, I believe Cecilia's memorandum talking about the revision of the request to 1.44 has to do with the fact that the original request was for 2.6 when the application first came in, in November of 2023. And that's when the plan was still unclear. There were multiple versions of the courts under consideration, and I think it was in, at some point after that, the request was revised, I think it was in February of 2024, before we voted, the request was revised to be a request for 1,440,000. And then ultimately, we know that that application was withdrawn just before the spring town meeting. So when this new application came in for off cycle consideration, the new application was for 1,400,000 even. So there's been two revisions to the amount that was requested, but the current correct amount is the 1,400,000.
Thank you. So I know it's only 40,000, but now that the amount has been increased to 3 million beyond the 2.6, what's the reason? Is there a reason for the reduction from 1.44 to 1.4?
I really don't know. I really don't know that there was.
We just reviewed what the new application was asking for.
Was requesting.
That's what we voted on.
Okay. Park and Rec now? Stacy?
We based the application off the numbers run by our consultant, Activitas, so I can, I'm actually off site at a conference in Vermont right now, so I can look that up and get those numbers to Dave and Lauren, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, again, I'm focusing on the actual application and the breakdown over and over is stated 1,400,000 even. And it totals the $3 million, which is the appropriation request control.
Okay.
No worries.
I'm, I'm still thinking that original 40 was an error.
Okay.
Isn't it end of message from a previous?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Mary, any sense?
I'm good.
Thank you. Any other questions? They think that?
Oh, the finance committee voted in favor of this project last week. Oh, the CPC voted in favor. We wouldn't ordinarily have done that. We would have consulted with you first, but, you know, time flies.
I know.
Yeah, so, yeah, everybody's on board, I think.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the appointments and the consent agenda, moving consent with, without, with the exception of the stormwater working group appointments.
Okay, before you vote, Heidi, you need to recuse yourself?
Yeah, so there is one appointment that I need to recuse myself from, and it's not the stormwater appointments, so.
So can I rescind my motion and just move of the appointment, the?
No, you're.
Just move the consent agenda?
Sure.
Or?
Yeah, I mean.
Did you say you have another one that's not, oh, you need?
I need to recuse.
I need to recuse myself.
Separately then?
Yes.
Okay, then I will make a motion to move the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. How do we vote? One discussion? So vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, okay. And appointments?
And then I will make a motion to move the appointments calendar for, for all appointments with the exception of stormwater bylaw working group appointments. I think Heidi is going to then say that she's going to recuse herself from.
Yes, I'll recuse myself from that, sure.
All right. So the motion, and one second. One second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, we come to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Heidi, come on back. Thank you, Mary. Okay, next up, recycling and transfer station user charges and fees. Dave Davison.
Yes, Mr. Chair, as would recall, at your last meeting, there was a presentation to the board and recommendations to adjust the rates for pay to throw bags, both the large and small packages. The large bags would change from $20 to $21.60. Small bags would go from $10.75 to $11.60. It would implement a commercial fee for dropping off box springs and mattresses, which would be a $40 fee. The residential fee would not be changed. It would also increase the fee to dispose of a television set to match that for a flat screen because the town has charged the same whether it's a television set or a flat screen TV from $15 to $20, so we would be uniformed in that rate. And then implement a new program that would allow small commercial operators during our regular business hours and provided this room available to dump snow at the, at the site. And that would be at $4 a cubic yard with a minimum charge of $15. And lastly, to remove the yard waste processing equipment fees as we do no longer rent out the equipment, and also the elimination of the commercial yard waste based upon volume because we have it based on weight. And we would have these fees take effect on, the fees take effect on October 1st.
Okay. Great. Any comments, questions, criticisms? None? Okay. You know, if you take Amtrak down to Philadelphia, you realize what they do with their box springs? They throw them onto the train track. It's so nice to lose a town.
Yeah.
It's really good. So thank God. All right.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the proposed changes to the recycling and transfer station charges and fees schedule itemized below in the select board packet that they be effective October 1st, 2024. And further, that the board approve the removal of yard waste processing equipment rented rental fees from the schedule as the town no longer rents out equipment. And further, that the board approve the elimination of the commercial yard waste disposal fee based on volume as the rates are now based on weight.
Just a question, do we have to read the rates?
We as? I just read it.
Oh, I see, no, but in the motion, are we going?
No, it is published, it's online.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any?
Second.
Yeah, and this is not a public hearing, so it's been seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, come to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We have new rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, signed notice of traffic regulations. Norwich Road, Thomas Ryder, town engineer.
I have actually three stop regulations.
One at a time.
One at a time? Norwich Road, okay.
Seems to be a tribute to distracted driving today. That's all I can presume.
Yeah, so Norwich Road, it's really to clarify the right of way. So all three stop regulations are in the same location, so you're going to hear maybe a similar theme, but Norwich Road is not designated stop right now, but this will clarify the right of way.
Okay. Great. Questions?
I do have a question. What, what process leads up to determining that road needs to stop?
So typically, it goes to the traffic safety committee, and sometimes, and then we do a traffic study. We determine the counts, and then we review the MUTCD manual to make sure that it meets the warrants.
Does it usually, or like originate from a resident complaint or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Usually it does, sometimes it's just, there should be a stop sign here. We observe it in the field, but most of the time it is from a complaint.
Thank you.
So in this case, there weren't accidents that had happened? It was more just confusion about who gets the right of way, who goes first?
Yeah, so the, the theme of this area is that they're experiencing more volume of traffic, especially when the backup from 128 is starting to be cut throughs. And although this is not supposed to be for traffic calming, it's supposed to be for designated right of way, there is a higher volume going through at certain hours or certain times when 128 backs up. We observed this. We brought out speed radar signs multiple times and redid the traffic counts multiple times to determine, you know, the speeds. So they are going at a higher rate, but that's not for the stop signs. This is to determine right of way and to, and also for traffic safety.
Yes.
Tom, I'm wondering, did we also consider, given that situation, putting up signs on Peacedale or whatever that say that it's not a through route or traffic's not permitted during certain hours of the day, or did we think about that?
Yeah, so the traffic safety committee did take a look at that. It's not really enforceable. So that is, was, was kind of discouraged from it, but we're, we're looking at other opportunities for traffic calming as well. So this is not the end of this area. We're going to be looking at more information.
Some communities seem to me four way stops or always stops, Metta, of course, but not here?
Yeah, this does not meet the warrants for always stop.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else?
All right. I'd rec, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to approve and sign the notice of traffic regulation permit number SS24-09-24, requiring that Norwich Road northbound and southbound be designated as stopped streets at the intersection of Intervale Road.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? Discussion? All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next one. We have Intervale Road, right?
Yes, Intervale is the T intersection. So this is for traffic safety concerns.
Just on the block from where we were.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So this will stop Intervale at Peacedale.
Okay.
And we would hope people were actually stopping here before there was a stop sign,
so apparently they haven't, there's equipment around the corner, so.
Wow.
Okay. You got beat the traffic. Okay. I would, any questions, comments?
Just one question. I noticed that all three of these stops are in the same neighborhood.
Yes, yes.
Were they all the results of one complaint or?
Yes, yeah. It wasn't complaints, it was, the complaint was really looking for traffic calming measures and also for safety issue, safety concerns. So we looked at, evaluated the whole neighborhood. These are the areas that we found that met the warrants to have stop signs.
Okay.
Considering there's more volume of traffic occurring too. You know, years ago, it was not enough volume, but it now is triggering the requirements, so.
Okay. Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to approve and sign the notice of traffic regulation permit number SS240924, requiring that Intervale Road be designated as a stopped street at the intersection of Peacedale Road.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, we have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next one. Now we move. Down the street from there to Peacedale at Great Plain Ave.
And if people were not stopping at this intersection before? I don't know how they managed to escape an accident.
Yes. So this is a minor into a major intersection, so.
Right.
Safety concerned?
Yeah. Okay. Questions? All right, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to approve and sign the notice of traffic regulation permit SS24-09-24, requiring that Peacedale Road be designated as a stopped street at the intersection of Great Plain Avenue.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unanimous. Let's start making stop signs.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for doing all the work, and thank you to the committee for that. All right. Next, positions on warrant articles. Dave Davison. Deputy Tommy Andrew.
Mr. Chair, the, there is a change to this warrant from that which the committee, the boards saw at its last meeting, and that is that the article to.
the boards saw at its last meeting, and that is that the article to make amendments to the general fund budget has been withdrawn. With our meeting with the Finance Committee last week, they recommended that it was simply one move, was moving funds from the reserve fund to the finance expense budget. And since the two budgets in question is technical, and it was basically still gonna be the Finance Committee's budget that was being affected, they thought it would be more appropriate and also quicker to secure the funds that had come in as a reserve fund transfer, and requested that the article be removed, and it has been removed from the warrant.
What number was that?
That was Article Number Four, and it's not in, in the version that you have this evening, it's not in yet.
Okay.
So the articles have been renumbered as a result.
Okay, great.
And with that, Mr. Chair, the first Article One, these, this is to appropriate the funds that every source will be paying over to the town, the pay for certain improvements to roads as a result of their work in the road, and to ensure that those monies are used for the intended purpose, they're appropriated by a warrant article, $255,855. Information was forwarded to the board previously.
Yeah.
And the Finance Committee did take action on this, and the committee is recommending adoption of the article.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I recommend adoption of Article One.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chair, the next article is Article Two. This is seeking an appropriation from the opioid stabilization fund in the sum of $82,000. This is funds from the settlements that the Attorney General secured from different entities that, that sold opioids, such as CVS, Walmart, and this substantial amount of money will be paid over to cities and towns over a 20-year period, some are paying over a shorter period of time, so in the early years, we'll be receiving more funds than in the later years.
Okay.
But it's, it's gonna be a long train. The details to the purpose of the funds that was provided to the board from, from the Health Department by Tim McDonald, the Director of Health and Human Services. The Finance Committee hasn't taken a position on this yet. There was some, there was seeking clarification in terms of the salaries and how those funds can be, what are the exact amounts and how they're gonna be used. We will be putting back to the Finance Committee how the salaries were calculated, but the purposes of the fund were laid out in the memo from Tim McDonald.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I attended the Finance Committee meeting, and I was also confused during the discussion, but I think the memo from Tiffany Benoit, the Director, Assistant Director of Public Health, was, was very helpful, especially the footnote.
Yeah.
So this money, $82,000, is for the peer support specialist.
Right.
But the entire amount, sorry. There are two components. They're looking to fund the existing position for the, you know, for the continuing and ongoing basis. The funding that was approved October 2023 has run out.
Okay.
So it's going to be funding the remainder for an ongoing basis through the end of this fiscal year. Plus, there's an additional amount to add hours to make it full-time, and I believe benefits as well is baked into that.
Okay.
So that it's on the right cycle? Is that the problem, right? It's off-cycle now?
It is off-cycle, but the intent is to get it on a fiscal year.
Extra half year to finish, and then also to supplement.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board vote to approve, recommend, darn it, recommend Article Two, appropriate for community opioid settlement fund program.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is seeking $150,000 from the tax levy. This is an article that will be presented to the board at a future meeting.
Okay. Do you want to hold off on?
Yes.
Okay. Next article.
Mr. Chairman, the new Article Four is the sewer enterprise fund budget. It seeks to amend the budget for two actions, both of them are items that happen prior to the publication of the original budget. One is the collective bargaining agreement that was reached with the DPW union that was approved by town meeting in the spring, and we have to supplement the budget to cover that expense. That's effectively $24,427 more, or just over 2% more. The other item is the MWRA assessment, final assessment was set, and it came in at $360,570 more than the level dollar number that we were using at the time we went to town meeting. That is 5.1% more than the original budget. So the, the effect of other changes would be to increase the sewer enterprise fund budget by 3.87%. Finance Committee did hear this, and Finance Committee did recommend adoption.
Why was the assessment so high?
It's a combination, there are several factors that come into play. There is the MWRA's own budget for operations of the sewer. Second is the town's flow, the town's percentage of flow going into the system to be treated. And there's two other components that has to do with population. Part of it is, in the formula is the percentage of population that is sewed gets assessed across, and your total population, because over time, the total population, if it's not all sewed, and in Needham, not the entire town is sewed, that that can put extra demands on the system in the future, so that's also calculated in the formula. But the driving factors on this increase was on Needham's flow, and just slightly higher on a percentage basis than the overall system.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that the, the town meeting adopt Article Four, amend the fiscal year 2025 sewer enterprise fund budget.
Great.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right. Next.
Mr. Chairman, Article Five is the water enterprise fund budget. Similar story, but a little more positive story than that on the sewer. The first is, there's, is to amend the salary wage line by $39,305, which is a 2.4% increase over the current budget. This too reflects the increase of, as a result of the passage of the two, in this case, there are two collective bargaining agreements that impact this budget. And secondly, the final assessment for the water came in $674,145 less than what the budget that was approved at town meeting, or a 35.7% decline. This is actually based on, of course, the town's usage. The MWRA assessment first takes into account the, their budget for FY25, and they bill communities based upon their calendar year usage prior to the start of the fiscal year. So in the case for FY25, this is based upon the water usage by the town in Needham from January 1st of '24 to December 31st, '24.
Okay. Okay. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, oops, I move that the Select Board recommend adoption of Article Five, amend the FY25 water enterprise fund budget.
Second.
Discussion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right.
Mr. Chair, the next article, Article Six, is to appropriate for unpaid bills of a prior year, where the town was, received a bill, and it is for services that were provided during fiscal 2022 from BID Needham for $518. The bill itself was over a year late from when the town received, and, but we received it not in time to get it on the special town meeting warrant back in, in the spring, hence we're taking it up in the fall. As the board is aware, one year's appropriation operating budget cannot be used to pay a future or a prior year operating expense. And in the case of a prior year operating expense, it requires a town meeting vote. And as I reminded the Finance Committee, this is one of those few votes, it's gonna require a nine-tenths vote of town meeting for approval.
Really?
So, so if it's not unanimous in extent, it'll be a common vote.
Okay. Good to know. All right. I'm just curious, what were medical services? What was around with that?
Pre-employment physicals, usually.
Okay. Okay. All right, so anyone has to vote for that. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to support Article Six in the special town meeting warrant. Do we also need to add this language to remove for former Article Four? Have we said that?
We have not said that. Yeah, we haven't said that.
We've said it, okay.
No, we've not.
We've not. And to remove former Article Four, amend the FY2025 operating budget.
Second.
No, 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 no. We're not amending the FY25, right?
We're removing our, the former Article Four, which would.
To remove.
Right, okay.
The Article, which ammend, which did try to amend. Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Questions? Discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That passes.
The next seven article, Mr. Chair, is to appropriate for public educational governmental programming, often referred to as PEG, as reminded to the board. The cable companies are required to pay a fee for, for public educational and governmental programming, which is used by the local cable television program, and our local cable TV, to broadcast things as exciting as the Select Board meeting.
It's so good.
And, and town meeting as well. It used to be that the payments were sent directly to the cable TV. With a change that was brought to our attention, we had to amend the practice that the monies must be received by the town and appropriated to the cable television station. There, we also were required to, which the town did at a previous town meeting, is adopt an act that allows those funds to be reserved specifically for appropriating the funds to the cable television. So we can only appropriate when we have the funds, and the monies come in during the course of the year. So you'll see this article every time we have a special town meeting, and we'll be appropriating whatever we have received and, and to the cable television station at, at the special town meeting. In this case, at $143,998, coupled with the appropriation that was made back in the spring, $471,675, it will be a total after the September 21st special town meeting, $615,673 that was raised by the cable companies, paid to the town for the intent of supporting our cable TV programming. It also pays for capital expenses and such, such as these cameras.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Discussion? Anything?
Mr. Chair, I would move that the board vote to support Article Seven, appropriate for public educational and governmental programming.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Mr. Chair, I think we could also vote Article Twelve, given that Finance Committee and CPC have voted, and we've now had the presentation. That's, Article Twelve is to appropriate for the high school tennis courts.
On page thirty of the warrant.
Actually, hold on a minute.
I think it was originally not recommended to us for voting because it wasn't clear who would have voted at this point.
Right.
But given that the other keyboards have.
Right. How do you guys feel?
I'd be ready to vote.
I'd say.
Okay.
Can I ask David a question?
Yeah.
What the balance of the athletic facility improvement fund would be?
After this appropriation, there would be $171,000.
And is there a plan, so what is the plan to bring that back up to the target level?
It would, we will continue with appropriations every year from the fees that are raised by the package appropriation on that five-year average, and we're in discussions with the Finance Committee, and I will be coming back to the board, some suggested changes in the way of funding, funding the athletic facility stabilization.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that the Select Board vote to support Article Twelve, appropriate for high school tennis courts, and recommend adoption. Second.
Okay. Discussion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes. Article Thirteen.
That's it.
That's it? Yeah.
There will be presentations on another meeting to the board for the remaining articles in the warrant.
Great. Okay, so I noticed who's covering articles, the town meeting. I just lost one article. I was doing the operating budget, and I noticed Heidi only has four articles to do. The big ones.
Only has four.
Only four.
Okay.
I didn't speak at town meeting last time at all, so.
Has there been discussion about discussing them as a group and voting separately, or has all that occurred?
Not yet.
That discussion is underway.
Scheduled, yeah. All right. Tommy Andrew's report, anything else?
Other than, I think the town manager is representing Needham well at the conference, and things are going well for them down there, but nothing more to report here in Needham. Thankfully, we don't have the hurricane.
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Committee reports. Anything to discuss? Yes.
I have some stuff. The, the tree working group met since our last meeting.
Okay.
I don't remember when, to be honest, but the, the group was able to define the goals and to come closer to assembling a charge which, with which we will present the Select Board to create a town committee for trees. So that will be, it will be modeled on the Climate Action Plan Committee, in which there's a initial committee that is quite large, that involves lots of stakeholders, including residents, and assembles a plan, and then at some point will transition into a permanent tree committee that will execute on the plan. And this will be coming to the Select Board soon.
Soon. In October?
Yeah.
I guess that's different than, than my concept of what was going to happen. I thought there was going to be kind of like a stormwater committee where we would recommend bylaw changes. I didn't realize it was going to be.
Well, bylaw changes would come under the strategies employed to execute on the goals, so it may, it or may not, depending on the, the work of the committee, result in a bylaw change.
Okay. I think, I look forward to the discussion.
Yeah.
Yes. And in addition to that work, I just want to note that I have been visiting all of the voting precincts, meeting with town meeting members to make sure that the MTA articles that will be presented at town meeting are well-understood, and that town meeting members have a chance to discuss the ins and outs, and kind of all of the, the points that may have a chance to discuss the ins and outs and kind of all of the, the points that may cause them concern. We've been talking a lot about being able to talk to their constituents about the plan and explain their, their feelings, well, explain what the plan is, and then explain, you know, why they choose to vote one way or another, so that everyone has a firm understanding of what is going to be implemented when the vote is taken at town meeting. So I have done, well, let's say I have three more precinct meetings to go, so have, have met lots of awesome people and fielded lots of excellent questions and had lots of good
Thank you for doing that, actually, because sort of the hallmark of Hone was that everyone's noticed, everyone's, because we discuss this thoroughly and exhaustively, and so everyone understands what's going on. So thank you for doing that. Good job. Anything else?
That's it.
Josh, what do you have for Stormwater Working Group?
We met last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, which feels like a long time ago. And I think we're still on track to bring proposed changes to discuss for the May town meeting.
And we're going to start drafting next meeting.
The outlines, what should be included and.
Right.
Yeah. We have, we have like a short list of like six or seven things, I think.
Yeah. It'll be great.
Are there any particular principles you're ready to share or not?
Sure. I mean, we discussed when it should or should not be allowed to connect to the storm, town storm drain system, because right now it's very vague. How much water should be collected on-site of a private property? So right now, it's one inch per square foot of impervious surface, and there, I think the consent to some of the groups that it should be higher, because one inch covers the NIPTE's requirements, but nothing but capacity. There have been discussions about integrating language to just clarify the stormwater fees. I mean, as long as we're making changes, we may as well clarify that as well. I think those are the big ones.
Yeah. Pre-construction, construction, post-construction.
Yes.
Capture water. What you can do.
Enforcement as well.
Right. And ultimately, it will be a bylaw, which is going to be the sort of the coat hanger of everything. The regulations are where the meat is. And right now, the town does not have regulations. Select Board has never passed them. So you guys will be asked to pass regulations as well.
I think the technical term is promulgated.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So you can promulgate, all of you. It will be, but we can promulgate easily, and we can adapt for technical language. But bylaw, actually, you can't. It sort of has to go through town meeting and presented. So that, that's the idea, is to break them up each other.
Can I ask, have you all touched on mounding at all?
Yeah.
I see that causing problems.
Would there be something related to that?
There we go.
Well, I think there's still an open question about whether that would be in the zoning or in the general bylaws. I don't think we've answered that yet.
Okay.
Okay. Wait, in the zoning versus in the, the regulations? Or in the zoning, that's the first time I've heard you mention zoning.
Right, because that's not part of our charge. But generally, when you're restricting what you can do with lots, like how high or far away, that's generally in zoning. And one suggestion was taking elevation into account. So if, you know, a parcel is higher in elevation than the neighbors, then maybe more water should be kept on the parcel than if it were, you know, at the same level or another. But explicitly restricting how much can be raised or lowered, perhaps there could be a permit process, but again, how that's regulated, I think we have to discuss.
I support that as a key, critical discussion, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it just sounds, sounds like zoning, it's like a longer process.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Okay, I have two things. One was, as mine was saying, that on early release day, the police department was giving out ice cream after the early release from the.
Did you go?
It turns out I'm too old.
Just checking.
But it sounded, it was a great idea, and I'd like to commend the police department for doing it. And like the, they said in the royal family, once is a tradition, I hope they do it again. And the other one is, the police and fire had a charity soft, fundraiser softball game for the Pease family. So that was a good one. It rained. It was very wet. All right. That's all I have. Anything else?
Hold on a minute.
Mr. Chair, I move you adjourn.
I do not see the need, but.
I second that.
Okay.
This might be the fastest meeting ever.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's have a vote. All those who want to adjourn. Say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned.